I'd like to call the meeting in order. If you would stand for a moment, silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, and welcome, everyone who's watching from home. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeBoer.
Present.
Trustee Gatt.
Present.
Trustee Kazan.
Present.
Trustee Reichert.
Present.
Trustee Wigginton.
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Present.
All right, everyone's here. Good to see you all. Next would be approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting and the public hearing on April 2nd, 2024. I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve both sets of minutes. Are there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all of us in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Would be comments from the audience. If you're here tonight to address the board, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and try and keep your remarks under five minutes. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Cook. I'm the Vice President of the Chamber of Commerce and co-chair of the Taste of the Heights. This year, we're going to be requesting September 19th for the street closure for the Taste, but I wanted to bring a couple of points to your attention beforehand. Last year, we had over 6,000 people come to the Taste of the Heights. It was a wonderful event where we could showcase really the true potential of Peoria Heights and everything that it has to offer. All of our businesses benefited from the increased foot traffic and advertising that came from the Taste. Once again, Peoria has canceled their Taste, so we're expecting an even larger turnout this year. On average, it costs us $20,000 to $30,000 a year to host both the Taste of the Heights and the Kringle Market. Both of these events are extremely successful and generate a good amount of tax revenue for the village. In previous years, we've received funding from the village to help ensure remarkable events like this. And for the sake of transparency, we brought in outside accountants to balance and organize every dollar that's come into the Chamber the last few years. I bring all this to your attention today because, on the proposed budget, there is no funding allocated towards the Chamber. These events are very successful, but unfortunately not free to host. So I'm asking you guys to please consider allocating $20,000 to the Chamber of Commerce to ensure the continued success of great events like these. I thank you very much for your time and consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have.
This is public comment. We may have some questions when we get to that item. If you're able to stay, are you able to stay?
Absolutely.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Public comment, go on once, twice. Public comments closed. We've got old business. Any old business to come before the board?
One quick old business. I want to thank Mike Bailey. I don't think he's here, but I really appreciated his follow-up with the news articles and some of the information he collected for us as a board. He sent over a lot of things that, you know, on both sides of the thing, very fair and balanced. I did want to just update. I ended up calling the Village of Morton, and I spoke with the village administrator there and asked her straight up, I was like, I hear you built a water filtration plant. My one question is, how'd you pay for it? And she said that they saved for 17 years and used funds that they had built up over 17 years. So they had money on hand to pay for that. I said, did you do any bonding at all? And they said they did not. So I said, was it $20 million? And they said it was more like 12 for them. But they had built up that through reserves, which I thought was pretty incredible. Now, she did say that they own their wastewater stuff as well, which is coming up to be replaced, and they will probably be seeking out those revolving, state revolving funds for that. But on their water filtration system, they paid for that out of their own purse strings.
Thank you, Trustee Wigginton, for doing that research. It'd be helpful for me sometime in the future, when you find out information like that, if you could email it to us, then I can have it readily available.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And thank you for correcting that number for the cost of building the filtration facility. Twelve.
Any other old business? Hearing none, let's get right into new business. The first is approval of the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget for the Village of Peoria Heights and the Peoria Heights Public Library. Trustee DeBoer.
I make a motion to approve fiscal year 2024-2025 budget for the Village of Peoria Heights and the Peoria Heights Public Library.
Is there a second? Thank you. Go ahead, Trustee DeBoer.
I don't have too much to say about this. I feel like we've really been through it a lot with a fine-tooth comb. So if anyone has any questions, I'm sure we could get them answered for you, but I'm ready to approve as soon as I can.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Dustin, anything you want to add?
No, ma'am.
Out of fairness, I know what we just heard in public comment. Do we want to address that at all now?
Well, if you can make an amendment, that's the only way to address it. You want to amend the budget.
Well, you would have to obviously amend the budget, but remember, our margins are very slim. And when I say slim, I mean slim. I was just looking at that. I mean, if that's something the board wants to look at, I know we have some money in this year's budget in marketing, but as far as next year's budget, we would have to find it somewhere because we've already been through this at length.
Trustee Weisenberg, you have?
Was an amendment made?
No.
Okay.
Nothing to talk about.
I'm not interested in an amendment, but I don't know how everyone else feels. You know, the businesses came out, they were extremely opposed to us raising sales tax. I mean, the entire audience was full of business owners. You know, some felt like they were being led to the slaughterhouse by this board, which was an exaggeration. But I'm not interested in an amendment budget.
Just a quick side note, even though there's not money budgeted for it this year, that doesn't mean that that's the way it's going to be for the future. With it being such slim margins this year, somebody had to take the hit. And with not increasing the sales tax, it's kind of the balance of it. That's not to say that down the road, with some of our other tax come in or something like that, we couldn't make some adjustments. But, you know, we're not not hearing you. It's just, we got to get it passed, and next year could be a better year.
In an effort to give the board some options, like I mentioned, we do have money in this year's budget if that's what they decided. Next year, I would say, we are so thin now, I don't see that happening. But we do have money in this year's budget, which only has a few weeks left if the board wanted some options. But if the board are not interested in that, then it would just move on.
I would really like to see us try to make every effort to support our businesses. These two events truly do bring a lot of visibility to our community and patrons from outside of this community that, you know, generate more sales tax for us. So we always have supported the Chamber. I think they do a wonderful job. And if there's anything we can do to help them this year, I think that would be great. Also, I'd like to mention that we still don't know about, you know, some of these new businesses coming online potentially, so.
I just had one question for Director Aldrich. I know that he's worked very hard on this grant for the Chamber. Is there money that's still coming down the pipe on that?
Yeah, we just applied for, we had to modify our agreement, and I think that went to the board, but through the DCO. So it was a little bit over $16,000. We collected about six. And so that means there's another 10 due that we just submitted the paperwork for. So hopefully get that soon. Yeah.
So there's an option there. I know it's not the 20 you asked for, but there's 10 of it through the grant that we've worked on, so, yeah.
Well, I wouldn't say that we're not providing any help. I mean, there's lots of in-kind services that we provide by Public Works and police. Is that correct, Mr. Administrator?
There is a lot of overtime involved with the Public Works Department, the Police Department, obviously, security. So, yeah, there are a lot of other expenses the villages, they do accrue. And I think that with the $10,000 that hopefully we get from the village, that will help out. So.
Just one follow-up question. Trustee Kazan, do you know how much tax revenue we generate from the Taste of Peoria Heights? Because we only get, like, what, 2% from those sales? So, I mean, we would have to do a lot of sales to make up $20,000.
Well, I think that it would be difficult to get an exact number because, when I say sales tax generated from that specific event, it's not just on the street. I mean, we have people then spilling into the bars and the restaurants and that type of thing, but I can try and guesstimate at some point, not in this meeting, but get that number to you.
Well, the grant number and also this year's budget, if you were to want, if you'd want to?
Also, I would have to say that, just Trustee Weisenberg, to continue answering that question, you know, we made cuts with Discover Peoria, and what this does is advertise our community. This is a huge marketing, you know, play for us. So you just have to look at, I mean, I think it's healthy to look at it in that way as well.
One thing that I, I mean, I understand Taste of the Heights is, it is, you know, for driver businesses and things like that. But I think the Kris Kringle Market is a little different. I think that's really a community-based event that is held here in Tower Park. I don't see a lot of, I don't see a lot of tax dollars being generated, honestly, but I do see a lot of kids smiling, the Christmas tree being lit, the tower looks great, their carolers singing in the thing right here. It may not be a tax generator, but it's a reason why businesses, it's that kind of feeling and that kind of aesthetic, it's a reason probably that Bradley wants to be right next door, is that's what the village is all about. And I'll tell you, when you're out there at Christmas time, I don't still, but I've said, you know where I'm going.
I know exactly where you're going.
But it is really, it's magical, right? I mean, it is, that's the kind of feeling that when you're in a small little village like that and you have people turning out, you know, that's what it's about. So I don't know. I'm, yeah, I just think that there's this stuff that the Chamber does that's good for the businesses, but it's also good for our citizens here in the Heights as well.
Mr. Cook, would you like to add anything at this time? If you do, please come forward with the microphone. That way, we have a lot of people watch from home, and they can hear you that way.
Yeah, absolutely. So we've been sitting in through a lot of these meetings in regards to the budget, and we know how tight things are. Like you guys were saying, you have a little bit of room left in this year's marketing. The committee that we have together for our Taste, they're pretty tight with money. We're very good at stretching pennies. So really, even if it was just a little bit from the current year's budget, anything that you would be willing to offer us, we can make stretch to extreme lengths.
Thank you so much.
Can I ask him a question? So you said you brought in an accountant to redo the budget and everything?
Yes.
And of course, you're a private entity, so it's not fully my business, but I requested the budget from Bart, which he had sent out the email.
Okay.
So is that budget that I received, that's from the new accountant coming in?
Yes, so we can print off all of our expenses, all of our income, everything from the last few years. We could get it to you tomorrow, if you would like that.
I think she emailed, but I just wanted to make sure that that was, you know, I mean, that's been within like the last two weeks, so I just wanted to make sure that was.
Okay, yeah, that's probably the one that I'm referring to, is, because we brought them in early '23.
Okay. So how, like, moving forward, how much do you think the Chamber is looking for the village to be responsible in funding for you? Or what, like, what actions are being had to make the Chamber a little bit more self-sustainable?
Absolutely. That's a great question. So this year, we're really focusing on expanding some of the profit-generating aspects of the Taste in the Kringle Market. We're adding a Kids Zone, we're adding a Beer and Wine Garden, things that have very little expense to us but can generate large amounts of revenue. That's, several of us being financial people, we are trying to look at this from a different lens. So that's one of the main focuses this year for our events, is trying to turn barely profitable events to very profitable events. We're also expanding our sponsorship options for the businesses inside of Peoria and Peoria Heights. That is free money that all we have to do is put a logo on something for. So we're hoping to radically increase the profit margins for that.
Do you feel like membership is, like, your Chamber members is up or down currently?
Yes, so our Chamber membership has been steadily growing since COVID. COVID, we had a pretty hard hit through that, but we have been rebounding since then. I think we're around 300 members at this point, stretching all the way from Peoria Heights to deep inside of Peoria.
So when you're looking at revamping some of these things for, like, revenues and stuff like that, are you doing anything to revamp the benefits for members?
Absolutely. So that's one of the things that Lindsay, our new admin, has been working on, is trying to promote businesses who are Chamber members, promoting them on our social media, sharing, you know, Facebook posts, things like that. We're trying to increase the attendance at our after-hours and at our Chamber meetings to try to increase that revenue as well, and that kind of depth of sponsorship, but membership.
So in looking at last year's budget, where we're at, what we budgeted for them last year, they didn't even spend all of what we budgeted for them, and asking Chief Sutton, we could pull the remainder of that to move it over and then pull from the difference in marketing just to make up a little bit more of it. We probably can't do the $20,000, but we might be able to do maybe?
It wouldn't be pulling it over to the budget in front of you, but it would just be basically just a whole different request, actually. So if that's what the board decide to do, I just want to give the board options. If you decided to go, whether whatever number it is, you have a few options. This year, we have obviously a little bit of surplus in that area, and we could do that. But if not, then that's the board's decision. Now, next year, I have to stick to my guns and say that those are slim margins, that I, we just, I mean, that is what it is.
Well, I believe we can do whatever we can for them and benefit the Heights. They do a lot. Taste of the Heights, like Trustee Kazan said, is a good advertisement for us and gets it out there. Kringle Mark, that's another thing that's PR. Maybe we don't make a whole lot of money out of that, but people come up there, it's Christmas time, everybody feels good. So whatever we can do for them, if we can get close.
Counsel, I'd ask you a question. If the board decided to donate out of this year's budget, would that have to be something that's, I mean, can that be addressed tonight, or that'd be something to a future meeting, like next meeting?
I think it can be addressed at a future meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you guys very much. I appreciate it.
Anyone else? One thing I'd like to say. Normally, I would find myself advocating to find the money to support this event tonight, but I think we're on such a very tight budget for this year and looking forward to the future. I think by not investing in Discover Peoria, not investing in some of these events, we could find ourselves where our tax revenues are leveling off or declining if we're not reinvesting in what our brand is. And I think our brand is invaluable. It's a very strong brand. The downtown is very well-known. So it's such a fine line, but then, on the other hand, if we don't start making some cuts where we need to, you get a couple of years down the road, and then we're going to find ourselves maybe in a position where we have to cut people. And I don't think we ever want to get in that position because people are our biggest expense here. So just a couple of things to keep in mind. So hopefully, as we know more in this fiscal year, as we move forward, that we can find some money to help you. It's not because we don't appreciate all you do. Anyone else have any other comments? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeBoer.
Aye.
Trustee Gatt.
Aye.
Trustee Kazan.
Aye.
Trustee Reichert.
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is approval of the street closure for the Taste of the Heights on Thursday, September 19th, 2024. Trustee Wigginton, I'd ask for motion to approve.
I move to approve the street closure for September 19th for the Taste of Peoria Heights.
For a second? Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Well, I think the Chamber did a nice introduction of Stephen Cook over there, the Vice President. I think it's been said, and I think Trustee Gatt said it nicely as well, it's a real big advertisement for the Heights. This is, what was the number, 6,000 people last year for the Heights. This event seemingly grows more popular every year. In fact, it's becoming so popular, I don't know where they're going to put people. So it is, it's really growing. It's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief Sutton, but we're going to do the same thing that we've done, reroute traffic through Columbus and to Trustee Weisenberg's concerns, we'll have officers there to make sure that people aren't speeding through the neighborhoods. It's, this is, I think, the third or fourth year that it's, fourth year? It's kind of turned into a well-oiled machine, and having volunteered out pouring draft beers, which is the most popular spot, I think, I think that our police presence out there is really well, and so it's, we haven't had any trouble out there. I don't know if you want to add anything, Mr. Cook, to that.
I'm glad you are pouring beer. I'm going to remember that when I ask for more liquor later. Okay, anyone else?
I think September 9th, just so you know, Mr. Mayor, that's going to be IML season. So.
September 19th.
September 19th.
Yeah.
So.
All right, anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeBoer.
Aye.
Trustee Gatt.
Aye.
Trustee Kazan.
Aye.
Trustee Reichert.
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, thank you and good luck. Thanks for being here. Okay, next is ordinance 2024-1728, an amendment to the Peoria Urban Enterprise Zone designating ordinance and its intergovernmental agreement. Trustee DeBoer, ask for motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-1728.
Second?
Second.
Sally Hanley with the EDC, welcome. Sarah, do you want to say anything to preface?
No, I think she's going to do a much better job explaining it. Thank you, Trustee DeBoer. Appreciate the opportunity. Seems like I come every year. We are on number nine. So this year, the highlights are parcel additions in West Peoria and unincorporated Peoria County. And in the unincorporated Peoria County, they're going to be including in the former closed Edward Power Station owned by Vistra, planning to do a battery storage operation there. The other unincorporated Peoria County is on South Lafayette. It's a community solar development that's being proposed for that parcel. And then last, the West Peoria acreage is for a residential multifamily and single-family home development that they're looking at doing. We are deleting some property in West Peoria, the Peoria Speedway, because that's fully developed, and they have no plans to move forward on that. The other two changes relate to the Illinois Enterprise Zone Act, actively changed, allowing the existing multi-jurisdictional zones to have an additional five square miles. Presently, you have 15 square miles that you allocated amongst the seven units of government participating. So it was decided by the representatives of those seven units of government to pool that additional seven, excuse me, additional five square miles and be drawn upon as a case-by-case basis. This particular time, Peoria County actually slightly bumped over their allocation, so they're going to be using a very small amount of that pool. But that's available to all units of government. And then the last related change is an incentive change. Unincorporated Peoria County in particular has had a number of requests for battery storage, wind, and solar, taking up a large acres. And so it was the administration and the county board decision to exclude those types of development from the property tax abatement that's allowed under the enterprise zone. And the developers have not shown any concern. Their interest is the building materials sales tax exemption. So that is a change of the ordinance. So there will be three applications going down. So if there's any questions, I'd entertain those questions now.
Anyone have any questions, Ms. Hanley?
Yeah, can you put this in the layman's terms for me? What is this?
Oh, sure, be glad to. So enterprise zone, the Peoria Urban Enterprise Zone is a state and local incentive tool. So it is primarily for industrial and commercial and then residential developments that occur in the geography that's designated as the enterprise zone in the seven units of government. Bartonville, Bellevue, Peoria Heights, Mapleton, West Peoria, Peoria County, and the City of Peoria are the seven units of government that participate. Two main benefits are building materials sales tax exemption, so when they buy all their concrete and lumber and roofing materials, that's purchased at no sales tax. And then the other benefit is a property tax abatement where the assessor does not see those improvements for over five years, but it's a descending amount. So year one is 100% is abated, and then year two, it's a descending amount. And then in year six, that full assessed value of the improvement that has taken place will be on the tax rolls. So it's a first.
When you say they buy, who is "they"?
Like, in terms of the county doing the assessment of the properties and that, and then "they" being the developer or the contractor on the building material sales tax exemption.
And, ma'am, how often do, in Peoria County, for instance, do we find an enterprise zone located in, say, a TIF district or a BDD or some other kind of economic, maybe?
Yeah, well, yes. The enterprise zone, quote me on this, but it's been the most longstanding. The TIFs came in, and the TIFs were sprinkled throughout the different communities in the region and that. Yeah. And then the business districts, maybe in the last, I don't know, maybe five years, you see more of those. So that's kind of the longevity. But there are provisions, so like, if there's a TIF and an enterprise zone, the property tax abatement is negated, so they don't get that benefit because that is a, right, that is what's sparing the development under the TIF project. Now, the business district and overlap, that's an additional sales tax on transaction, like retail service, not building materials.
Once it's completed.
Yes, yeah. So you're spot on, though. I'm actually, I'm part of the Illinois Enterprise Zone Association, and this year is our first year coming up in the spring, in a couple of weeks, actually. They're combining the Illinois TIF Association, the Illinois Enterprise Zone Association, and they're actually going to talk about business districts because there is, you know, quite a bit of.
Overlap.
Overlap, but then making sure everybody understands it. But the enterprise zone's been real popular with residential development. I'm actually speaking up by Chillicothe and unincorporated Peoria County. We've had about five, I think we're on six homes that have been built up there because that takes, as long as it's a single-family home, they can take advantage of that, building material sales tax exemption, the property tax as well.
Could you explain the designation? Here it says, the city of Peoria receives 10 square miles for designation, and Peoria Heights receives 0.3.
Yeah, that actually, a little before my time of being involved, Peoria County had a representative that worked for the county under economic development, Mark Roethert was his name. And then the city of Peoria, Susan Schloop, they were the two individuals that in 2017, when we went out, 2016, they went out and they ran around to all the units of government, that's my understanding, and asked, you know, what property do you want brought in? And they were looking for, you know, industrial zone or areas that had opportunity for development. So that's how they came upon that allocation. And that's what's nice about this pool, because actually, there's a sister, Peoria Rural Enterprise Zone, and they just went with a pool. And so that's why the state's attorney and the county administration, we talked about, let's just make this five, additional five acres a pool, because you never know what development might occur, you know, like the Edward Power Station and that. what development might occur, you know, like the Edwards Power Station and that. So you, so you can utilize that pool in addition when you get to your limit.
Is it just our business district that's covered under this enterprise zone?
It runs down more Memorial and Prospect, doesn't it, Sally?
Yes.
It's been used, I'm certain, on, on the Truskers Project. That was Keystone Funds.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and Springfield Clinic.
SSA.
Yeah, there's been quite a, quite a few developments I've worked with Sarah and the team on.
It looks like there's some below the hill, below, below us as well.
Yeah, it's possible we could use it on, when we get a development agreement with BECS.
Yeah, SPECS was part of that. Mm-hmm, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you for being patient and answering all the questions.
Oh, that's what I come for.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is ordinance 2024-1729, an ordinance authorizing the lease of property located at 1201, 1203 Kingman Avenue to Bradley University. Trustee DeVore asks for motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-1729.
Second, please.
Second.
Go ahead, Trustee DeVore, welcome, Mr. Foley.
So in front of you, you have an ordinance authorizing the lease of the property at 1201, 1203 Kingman Avenue to Bradley, and attached in is Exhibit A is the lease agreement that council has settled on with them. I think Mark would be better suited to answer any questions to this.
Sure, so the lease is similar to the lease that we had in place before. The rent is 6,000 a year instead of 2, I think it was 2,400 a year under the old lease, so more than double. The term is for five years. It'll run from, once this is approved, and I think you're ready to get going, right? Sounds like it. So it'll be a five-year initial term, and then there are four additional option periods where they can extend it, or four additional periods of five years, so that'll be up to an additional five years. Otherwise, standard terms and conditions. If you look at the very tail end of the lease, there's provisions about events and closing times and things like that. I don't need to get into the, the, all the details on that necessarily unless you have questions, but they understand the location, you know, being right across from Tower Park, and, you know, they're, they're wanting to be in the neighborhood.
And not in writing, but in concept, the board had asked you to talk to Bradley about a couple of things, like services or partnerships with the local high school, maybe applying for grants jointly with us for the local...
And I know that Mr. Aldrich has had discussions with Mr. Foley, and I'll let the two of them kind of update us on that, that the lease is, like I said, almost identical to the original lease, but...
Mr. Jim, or Wayne, go ahead, please, on a few.
Sure, I'd be glad to. First of all, it's my first time to come back since we made the presentation, and I appreciate your support. You had two great proposals, and I know it was a tough decision. I hope something works out, that both work out. I know that's part of the goal as well. A lot has happened. I will say that once the word got out of the proposal, all of a sudden, all these people had kitchens that they wanted to be used as a shared commercial kitchen. So we've kind of stirred up the pot, but I think this is going to be a leader. I think it fits, as we discussed before, with, with the whole brand of the village. It's a perfect fit in that regard. So we're very excited about the project. I want to thank Director Aldrich. He's been so easy to work with. Emily and Sarah getting keys to me when we needed to get contractors in to look at it. Our two councils knew each other. That helped the, this was almost effortless to get the lease agreement done. The last thing we're working on right now is with Johnson Mechanics, Mechanicals, to do the hood. We are going to have to, now that we've gotten into the facility, the exhaust was good for popcorn, but the exhaust is not up to code for a kitchen. The stairs are right where the hood has to go, that go up to there. So there's some reconfiguring that has to be done, but it's, it's all doable. I'm waiting for the final proposal from the contractor there. And yes, partnerships have always been a big part of this, this vision that we have, and we encourage that. The success of this really hinges on those partnerships and bringing everyone together, starting with the Turner Center. Connie Randall would be here if she could, but she's finally enjoying a little bit of retirement and did a road trip with her husband, and they'll be back within a few weeks. So that's just some quick remarks, and glad to dig into anything else that you might want.
Wayne, did we leave anything out?
Again, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Foley. It's been a pleasurable negotiation, and again, very excited about this opportunity. And I think the board, you know, during the presentations, you know, this a little bit lower scale, I guess, for the neighborhood, which I think everyone likes, but it also supports businesses. It's a, it's a incubator of sorts for certain businesses, and I think we'll see some benefits to that as well. So very excited about this agreement.
One point that I overlooked in one of the sections, 11.4, the villages, there were some, you know, improvements need to be made through the building up to code, especially across around the hood, was talked about, that's one. And so in the lease, the villages committed to spend $10,000, up to $10,000 toward building code-related improvements, and that would be the hood and other, you know, modifications necessary to make it appropriate to use as a kitchen.
Thank you. You go up with any questions?
Yeah. Thanks, council, because I was just about to comment on that. When we'd originally heard the proposals, Bradley had mentioned that they were going to ask for any, any money for improvements. And it said $10,000 for buildings, but not limited to code issues. So that kind of sounds like it's not going to be just code, code issues, council?
The way I see this is it's, it's similar to a BDD kind of incentive fund. So that's, that's the way we saw it when we were negotiating it. Something we had offered to most businesses, you know.
And these funds will come out of the BDD.
Yes. And again, a considerable investment by the Turner Center on this property as well.
And a property that we own.
And, 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 Trustee, you're, you're correct. It is not only limited to code.
Right.
I'm just...
No, no, you're fine. When we were discussing the two proposals, that was one thing that made Bradley more attractive to me. Matheson was asking for money upfront, but Bradley wasn't. And then when we get the proposal or the lease, they may be our... So it's a little frustrating, but that's that, ma'am. Looking forward to this year.
And, Trustee Kazam, I, I also want to appreciate your work on this building and the various leases that have been floated around for the last year or more. But you said something, the, the funds do come out of the BDD, the, the $10,000?
Yes, I believe that they do.
Okay.
They can, we would have to vote on that, though, right, council? Just like...
Yeah, yeah. And that would have to be a future proposal that we...
And we're still waiting on the final cost, anyway.
Yeah.
So we just get a bill, we got to pay for it. We can pay for it out of BDD if we do that by ordinance.
If you all vote to do so, yes.
Does it have to be certain items for it to be BDD eligible, or can it be anything?
There's an application.
Okay, so that may potentially not be BDD eligible.
I, I think they will do a lot of improvements that might not be BDD eligible, but some of them will.
Okay.
Did you have anything to add, Wayne?
I just said, BDD is pretty wide open, in my understanding, not like TIF. TIF would be more restrictive, but we have options to do both, really.
And is this $10,000 budgeted next year or this year?
Next year.
Huh?
Next year.
Is it next year's budget?
Yes, I believe it's next year.
What line item was that?
It's in the, in the BDD fund.
Oh, come out of the BDD fund if you...
What if it isn't BDD eligible? We're, we're committing $10,000 there, but it doesn't say necessarily BDD. It just says $10,000. What if, so if it's not BDD eligible, we're going to tell them no?
No, we can't tell them no.
That's my, that's what I'm trying to get at. It doesn't say that the $10,000 has to be BDD eligible. It just says $10,000.
I would be shocked if it's a BDD eligible.
The intention has always been that it does not come out of your otherwise operating budget. I can, we can put in here that if it does not qualify under that, the BDD, am I saying it right, sorry, then we won't ask for the $10,000.
I have a feeling they're going to be doing so much work on this building that there will be plenty of items that are BDD eligible for them to put it underneath that categorization.
Yeah, just knowing historically what's come out of the BDD, that majority of this will, I would be shocked if it doesn't. But, good point, but I would, I'm not really worried about that. I think, I think it will be qualifying. Anyone else?
Just one question on, on term. So we have a five-year term, and that is, but the, the remainder of the document is enforced for however long it's extended. So you mentioned specifically 11.4. 11.4 is a one-time...
That's a total.
...over potentially 25 years.
You're likely to get asked for that in year six if they haven't used the whole $10,000.
Okay.
My guess is they're going to do all the improvements upfront, probably any requests are going to come in over that first several months of the lease.
But it's my understanding, it's $10,000 over potentially 25 years.
Yes, we're, we're not committing any other funds beyond that first $10,000.
Got it.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
That passes. Mr. Foley, we're really excited about this new partnership with Bradley, and not only Bradley, but yourself. Your reputation is global, and to have both Bradley University have a presence in the community and you spearheading that is, is really special, and we're looking forward to this, so.
You're, you're making me question to keep living near Bradley because the experience with the village has been top-notch, and I mean that sincerely. It, yeah, I mean that, I really do. So thank you. We look forward to it.
Thank you very much. Okay, next is approval of ice pigging services, an ice pigging services agreement in the amount of $213,915. Trustee Reichert had asked for motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Second, please.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Gett. Go ahead, Trustee Reichert.
Uh, this is for our second set of ice pigging. Yes, Trustee, or Superintendent Chandler, you might be able to shed some light on when, where, what?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So we're looking at, once we make the deposit, we can get on the calendar, we're hoping in the middle of summer, doing basically Lake Avenue south of BECS and taking care of everything south of Lake in this round, plus possibly our raw water, raw water mains that come from our wells to our treatment plant as well.
Correct.
And it's right on par with what we spent last year, and we feel like it really did make quite an impact.
How does the size of this territory compare to the experimental first round that we did?
Um, it's going to be the same size.
The same size, okay.
Yeah. So 10 loads is what it is, so a load is a day.
Okay.
So it's going to be 10 days, so it'll span over two weeks.
Okay.
Plan on doing it in the middle of the night to impact less people and businesses. That seems like that would probably work best.
Okay. And we've already budgeted for it for next budget, so I make a motion to approve. Right? Is that what I'm allowed to do? Or did I already do it?
You already did.
I already did it. I don't know.
Any, anyone else? Uh, just, this morning, I had the opportunity to join in a conversation on nothing but infrastructure. The meeting was hosted by Dr. Amir Al Kifaji from Bradley University, who invited a lot of mayors from the area, from Bloomington and Normal and McComb and Peoria and West Peoria, and lots and lots of mayors, and the topic was all-morning infrastructure. So there's lots of infrastructure needs all throughout the state and especially in central Illinois, so I applaud you all for spending this money to make our water better, so thank you. Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
That passes. Any miscellaneous business coming for the board?
I just have one thing, mayor. Just a reminder that May 3rd and 4th is our annual spring cleanup days. Peoria, or the Public Works Department, between 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, for Heights residents only. You will need ID, because there will be somebody checking. So if you need it, if you need to know what they will and will not take, go to our website, it's posted. But just a reminder, and this is a, this is just an effort to keep all the, the couches and everything else out of the alleys and on the curbs for days. So if you know anybody that has a lot of stuff sitting out around, if code enforcement doesn't hit it first, please let them know of these dates.
Thanks, chief. Is, is the only restriction really just electronics?
Well, yeah, electronics. I think there are some appliances. There are a few other things, but it's just a handful of things they won't take.
Okay.
I think they're only allowed so many mattresses, I think.
One, one mattress, yes.
Yeah, one mattress per...
No paint.
Old wooden playground, if they're cut up, that would be okay?
I think that would be fine.
Perfect.
I don't think that's on the list.
Asking for a friend.
Yeah.
If, if we have tires that have been dumped into the alley, is that something Public Works can pick up? I mean, what do we do with tires that have been dumped in the alley?
I mean, we are, we are responsible for getting rid of tires that we pick up. I mean, ultimately, the village would have to pay that, pay that disposal.
Depends on the tread. We are in a budget crisis.
That would be a nice way to save the budget, if you just pack them up in the back of your car, drop off, or...
I, I did get a message from someone that there were some tires that had been dumped.
Our, our Public Works Department has been great, and I, I don't want to throw that out there, because I don't want to end up, I don't want to have 100 tires down at the Public Works garage, but if there is an issue, I know that they've been great at swinging by and grabbing them, so.
Appreciate it.
Any other miscellaneous? Just to let you all know, Mr. Aldrich and I will be going to Springfield tomorrow. The IML is hosting Lobby Day. One of the big topics is grocery tax, among other things, and how that, if, if, if that passes, how other funding might be coming to local municipalities. So the governor and the House leader and Senate leaders are all speaking tomorrow, so we'll update you on that.
Do have a couple of announcements, mayor.
Go ahead, Wayne.
One is on May 8th, we're planning a parking meeting with the Chamber of Commerce. So it's really a, I, I don't even want to call it a discussion, more of a listening session, you know, if there's concerns over parking, we've heard a few, certainly working with the chamber members and other property owners, primarily in the business district, central business district, just to hear what the concerns are, and then maybe determining some actions based on that. There has been some talk of a parking study, and there are some grant opportunities through regional planning, potentially the first, for funding something like that. So just general session, just to hear folks' concerns on May 8th here.
What time?
I think 5:30 we settle on. On May 9th, the next day, we're trying to schedule our active transportation plan consultant to come into town. That's Jim Klein with Lardner Klein, to have our first kind of kickoff meeting with a few members of the public. We're trying to define who that group may be. We'll call it a focus, focus group, that type of thing, folks that are, we know are interested in active transportation issues, to have a, a meeting here and then perhaps do a little tour around town, things like that. So really the beginning of, of that process with Lardner Klein and the active transportation plan. Haven't decided, determined a time for that meeting.
Just to follow up on the parking meeting, a few months ago, some local property owners began towing cars, so I had calls from some of the local businesses, and I went down and met and walked around, and then on a follow-up, Trustee Kazam and myself, and Wayne walked around some of the neighborhoods off of Prospect to try and brainstorm about possible solutions. So this meeting is following up on that.
Mayor, residential, property owners for towing vehicles or business?
Commercial.
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 Property owners or owner?
I'm aware of one owner that owns several properties.
Thank you.
Okay. We would be at general comments from the audience. If anyone would like to address the board, again, please come forward to the podium and give your, your name and address, and try and keep your remarks under five minutes. Anyone like to address the board? One once, twice, comments from the audience are closed. We would be at payment of the bills. I'd ask for motion to pay the bills.
I make a motion to pay the bills?
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to pay the bills. Are any discussion on the motion or question on any of the bills? Here we go. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. The bills are paid. Next is the treasurer's report. Madam Clerk.
As of the end of March, there was $8,113,118.36 in the village-controlled accounts. In the water-controlled accounts, there was $2,94,213.12.
You've heard the treasurer's report. I would ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the treasurer's report. All those, actually, we have the motion. Any discussion on the motion or questions on the report? Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, there being no further business, come before the board. Trustee Gett?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, or adjourned?
Fair, fair, sir.